All right, let's reconvene for our work session if we can call it to order. I think almost everybody is here. There's probably some coffee being poured right now. So this work session is going to bring us up to speed on where we are with our ARPA Conversation and Analysis called Interim Board Report. Should I just turn it over to David or do you have to say something first?
I think we can turn it right over to David.
All right. Do it. Very capable. David Zernick from Guide House here.
All right, hello everyone. We are here for the interim board report. Keyword interim. We are in progress on a lot of this, so we're going to try to give you an update and answer or get back to you with any of the questions you might have for us. First step here is just to remind everyone where we are in the process. So we're here week of June 20th giving you the interim report. Next week, we will be closing the survey and idea portal. And that way, we will have that data kind of finalized and be able to really analyze the final data that comes in there. And then we will be closing everything the week of July 11th. But we do have a report we were going to give shortly after that. I do not think we're going to be able to deliver a final report at that time, but we can do an additional interim report as requested. So we're happy to be here and do that. But we are looking at that final report really being done for your meeting in August, the week of the 22nd. So that's a big picture overview. Any questions there? Yep.
So what is closing next week?
I mean... The survey. So there's a survey idea portal and then there's the full proposal portal. The proposal portal is open a lot longer.
And that date was July 11?
That date will close the week of July 11th. Yep.
So July 15 is the actual date.
Thank you.
And July 1 is the actual date for the survey and idea portal where somebody can just shoot in an idea, hey, I think you should do this or end the survey. So that's the part that goes first.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions about the process? All right. Two slides just reminding you of some things here. So we've got those priority groups, community health, quality of life, infrastructure, economic innovations and workforce development, and improving government operations. We do have the two ways that we are collecting all of this data, both the survey and the proposal portal. And a reminder of our big picture goal is a once in a lifetime opportunity to transform our community. So that is what we're really looking for and thinking about as we go through this process. A couple of framework things I just want to go over and reiterate. This may have been discussed earlier, but it's something you will be hearing as we go through this process. So, and these are terms literally defined and laid out by the U.S. Treasury in the way that certain projects are eligible. So we've got impacted as a term. These are directly impacted by the pandemic and its negative economic consequences. There are many ways this can be defined, examples being low income households, households that qualify for certain federal programs, small businesses or not-for-profits that experience a negative economic impact, and then blanket travel, tourism, and hospitality. We have another separate term that has disproportionately impacted populations. And the real difference here is these are groups and communities who experience disproportionate public health or economic outcomes from the pandemic, and we can use qualified census tracts to identify these people. So there are a lot of projects that we're literally going to be saying, is this in a qualified census tract? And that's going to make it allowable. And then finally, reasonable and proportional. We need to make sure whatever we're doing is reasonably, does reasonably benefit the individual or class and is related and reasonably proportional to the impact of the pandemic. To tie this all together, the note here is that disproportionately impacted communities, interventions may address broader pre-existing disparities which contributed to more severe health and economic output. So what does that mean? In other words, we want to, it allows us to increase the range of what is considered reasonable and proportional. Okay? This is our key framework. This will be a big part of the final report, and I just wanted to reiterate these terms and how they're defined. Any questions here? Great. So by the numbers, big picture, where are we? We have so far had 30 meetings with disparately impacted groups. We have had four community forums. There are two more planned. We've had 1,128 survey responses. And in those survey responses, we've had 804 people that have given us an idea. And we have had 77 actual completed proposals. Any questions? We're going to dig into some of these in a moment.
I assume the 77 exceed the available dollars?
Oh, yes, I'm sure. I don't have that number offhand, but that's quite easy to do. All right. So proposal summary. We've got on the left kind of broken down by those priority groups, how those proposals came in. So you can see everything is kind of covered, but we only, of course, have one in the government operations.
I'm glad to see that, by the way.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure you are.
You got one.
Yes.
No, wasn't that, wasn't me?
But we do have options across the board. I want to note that these were identified by the submitter, and so they're ideas that will, of course, cross many of these priority groups and could be labeled otherwise. And one of the things we're starting to do with these proposals is organize them by theme. And this is separate from the priority groups because the goal is to understand what's the narrative coming out of the community. So as we've started bundling these by theme, some of the themes that have come out is recreation, workforce development as being the top themes we're seeing, along with business grants, mental health, and parks and green spaces. Anything that's in the other space just doesn't have more than one other idea that seems related. This is going to change dramatically as I've seen in other clients that I've worked with. We've had proposals double in the last week, so this is very preliminary. But this is kind of to see where we're going with all of this. Any questions? Yeah.
I just want to circle back on Chair Steck's point. If we can add to this with an email to us on the dollar amount that's been requested, that would be helpful where we are to date.
You got it?
Thanks.
All right. These are the ideas summary, and these are the ideas that came with those surveys. So again, we did a general dump in of what is those priority groups. Again, covered here across the board, but we're seeing a similar trend with those proposals. Quality of life, community, health, and infrastructure are getting a lot more energy than the other two options. And then by theme, again, trying to pull these together. And this is preliminary interim. I'm sure we'll find ways to group those other categories more. But as you can see, we have quite a few in the multi-use facility with ice and turf. I believe there was a little bit of a campaign around a very specific idea in the Rockford area. So we seem to get a lot of ideas around that. But outside of that, you see mental health and affordable housing receiving over 50 ideas themselves by theme. Any questions here?
Yeah, question, go ahead.
Looking at these two graphs, I do, maybe with this outlier not necessarily being an exception, but understanding the context of that outlier, there is part of me that sees these, the results of this survey in terms of valuing different ideas and different themes, a little more pressing than the former, only because your ability to submit a proposal is highly dependent on your schedule or your sophistication in being able to put it together, where that's not necessarily a transect of our broader community, where this tells me this is what the community wants us to invest in, which should help us frame the evaluation of the proposals themselves.
That's exactly the game plan. So these are going to be crossed together with our proposals. So we're going to code this according to how we end up theming all the proposals so that we can get an idea of how are they speaking to each other and how do they support each other, along with our priority group survey. And then, of course, cross cutting that with demographics, which we're going to get to in a second. So we're on the same page here.
Yes, question over here.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have a quick question. So if there's ideas or proposals on some of these projects that don't really align with what the county has the ability to do and control, are we informing other municipalities who, you know, it might be a better fit? Like, hey, there's this idea, like Gaines Township, maybe you should look into this?
Yes. So that's always been a part of the strategy, and everyone that I've worked with is absolutely collaboration across governments. So as we review these, it's one of the things we look at is how can we collaborate? It's literally one of the questions we have on our internal review process. So if we do think there's a local government collaboration opportunity or passing along opportunity, then we definitely note that.
Thanks.
Yep.
David, if it'd be possible to maybe in, on this future update, the next one, give a little breakdown of other, only because it's almost as large as everything else combined.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so just to characterize that a little bit might be good.
Yep. Okay. All right. So survey responses by priority groups. Everything, you can see a trend here, beginning with these first three groups getting the most attention. I think the biggest takeaway here, two biggest takeaways, respondents across all groups had generally consistent preferences. And as we think about the end game here and how we want to put together a full set of projects, that if we've got projects that hit the first three priority groups listed here, community health, quality of life, and infrastructure, that 88% of respondents will have their number one choice spoken to in the funding choices that you all make. So I think that that's a strong takeaway. Any questions here?
One, oh, sorry. I know that we talked about how these different buckets, sometimes they bleed over.
Yeah.
With community health, do we get a sense that people are maybe speaking as much to social determinants of health than direct community health services?
You know, I don't have that for you, but I think that's a really good thing we could break down as we look at the ideas and see things that were labeled as community health and what that, those ideas break down, what that breakdown looks like. I think will tell us a lot, so we'll look into that. Great.
Yeah, I think the, I'm sorry, keep wanting to call it the surf and turf, but the ice and turf proposals described as being community health focused.
Okay.
So it's all how you articulated.
Gotcha. All right. Any other questions? So a couple priority group cross sections that we were looking at from a demographic standpoint. The first one is income. So this tracks with our overall trend. There doesn't seem to be any variance here. The median of respondents self-selected, 100 to 149,000 is their household income bracket. Just important to note, definitely over the median resident. Education, highly educated respondents were disproportionately preferring community health. Respondents with less than a high school diploma disproportionately preferred quality of life and infrastructure. This is disproportionate to the overall trend. And then race, minority groups disproportionately preferred community health and government operations, but did not prefer infrastructure. So these were our rough takeaways in how do they compare to the overall response? So as I spoke about last time, we, of course, are looking at this data and trying to make any course adjustments. So these are gaps and solutions that we've kind of laid out with the team here with Kent County. Gap one, we wanted to increase representation of lugs around greater Grand Rapids. We do have a planning meeting in Wyoming and Kent County Town Hall coming up here. Second gap, we wanted to increase Hispanic representation. We saw that being low overall as compared to overall population. So we're doing an additional Spanish language push. And the third gap we identified was we wanted to increase representation of low income groups as we saw upper middle class being overrepresented. So we're doing outreach with the Kent School Services Network, Emergency Needs Task Force, and the United Way. Any questions? So our in-progress priority group narrative, big picture, community health and quality of life would be the most generally popular priority groups to spend in, and emphasizing these two would also be responsive to minority preferences. This is kind of our in-progress group narrative that could change as new information comes in, but this is kind of what we're looking at right now. That is the report. Can I open up to questions?
All right. Any questions while you're thinking? One of the buckets from the, from ARPA is the revenue replacement bucket, which, as I recall, allowed the funds that went through that bucket to be utilized in a far more diverse set of applications. One, is that still so under the current regs? And secondly, the restrictions or the requirements that you had in one of these slides about how it addressed impact in certain communities, does that apply to those funds as well?
So yes, it is still true, and no, it does not apply. So as you look at the different categories, each, and we could go through this forever, I don't know, maybe there's 45 categories, each category lists out whether it needs to be impacted, disproportionately impacted, and how you need to report on that. So we could really go into the weeds on this. But no, everything under revenue replacement would be outside of those requirements.
Is subject more to just the general fund application?
Exactly.
Yes, Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I, I think this is a, like a specific example, but just to ask you, Mr. Chairman, kind of how we're going to collectively decide whether something is transformational. So I'm, I'm just looking at the list of funding proposals and organizations, and I don't even know what their proposal is, but I see, you know, Brody's V Cafe on here, and that's an example of an organization that has two things that I love, coffee and helping people with disabilities with employment opportunities. So I have a very, you know, positive, you know, perception of that organization and the other similar cafes around the area. How do we look at that proposal and say, is this transformational to Kent County?
Yeah, that's, so I think that we found that's probably one question that we hear the most in our forums as to really what does transformational mean? And it certainly is a subjective term, I think intentionally subjective, by way of allowing the, the public to begin to envision what could be transformational from their perspective and then to enroll us on that. I know that we've talked in some of the forums about thinking of it in scope of what's the, what's the radius of that within the community? Is it your family? Is it just you? Is it your neighborhood? Is it your entire city? Is it, so that would be, to me, one of the relevant factors. And I know that you guys are going to do that analysis preliminarily. But also then, is it going to make an impact for the next week, the next month, the next year, the next decade? I think the longer it is, the more likely it is to be transformational. And is it really going to have significant change or is it incremental in changing? Now, those are just sort of three ways of looking at it, but I don't know unless you have more, Dave, metrics about what you're thinking by way of your measure. But the process here is that Dave's group will be going through that first analysis, and then there's going to do an internal analysis. And ultimately, we have to make that decision about what's transformational to us.
Yeah, and I'll add to that. So what we'll be thinking about is, you know, in the process, because you are seeing the proposals, and there's a lot of ideas that aren't transformational or are maybe not reasonable or feasible or what you really want to be doing with the funds. But the idea is we create a narrative out of that. So for instance, you know, say there's 100 small businesses and they all ask for money, well, maybe we identify there's a desire for small business funding. Not saying that we're doing that here, just as an example, hey, there's momentum here. So then the next step we want to do is whittle things down to what really is kind of the big picture ideas. What are the big things coming out of this, whether there are a bunch of small things or a couple of big ideas? And then we want to understand what's the breadth and the depth of that impact and try to give you numbers, because I think numbers are helpful, in explaining that depth and breadth. So it could be a small impact on 100,000 people or deep impact, I think in this case, on a smaller group of people. But if we can try to put some numbers around that, I think that makes your decision-making a lot easier. And the final thing I would say, and I say this to everyone, you're never going to get this kind of money again. So I think that's got to be part of the decision-making that you think about, is what are the projects you'll never be able to fund again? Which does, by definition, start limiting what you're looking at.
It'll be an easy rest of the year, won't it? Commissioner Jones, I think you were next.
Thank you, Chair. So just to help me understand the communication with the folks who are submitting these, if you have something partial or something completed, submitted, what information goes back to that person? Is it a, just a thank you for your application, we'll be in touch? Is it more of a timeline? What do they know about where this is in the process?
Sure. I'm going to say the final thing, but Lori's got the intermediate answer. The final thing is that the report that we generate should be responsive to every proposal that comes through. So when someone sits down and reads that report, they're going to understand where their idea kind of sits in the bigger picture and understand why it was funded or wasn't. And that's our job to make sure that that narrative makes sense to anyone who's reading it. So I want to leave it at that.
Are you asking as soon as the submission, is there communication immediately?
Yeah, so, I mean, take any, thank you for providing this list. Take any of these applicants, what did they get back after they hit, after they pressed submit?
They would just get a generic, you know, email or response that say, thank you for submitting it, here's our timeline. If you have questions, we did refer them back to an email address. So that's just the automated thing that happens with the survey. Jen Hedrick with our team is then following up with a direct email to say, here's your proposal that you've submitted. If you have any questions, please let us know. So there's kind of a two-part contact with those that have submitted the proposals. For the ideas in the survey, that's just a generic thank you, and we did provide a timeline as well as an email if they have any questions about it.
Thanks.
I think maybe the suggestion behind that is, to the extent we've affirmatively gone out and invited these, encourage these people to make these proposals, that we try to have human contact probably as promptly as possible after that.
Yeah, and we also talked about when the two surveys close, what we generally do, just as our normal practice with surveys, is then send a response to all those that replied, said, thank you, here's what our timeline is, here's where you can follow along for updates. So there'll be another one once the survey closes to that group. But for those that have the proposals, they will get an actual PDF of what was submitted.
My follow-up slightly in the lead, in the weeds, but I'm going to go there anyway. Let's say there is a proposal on here and it's going to be contingent on matching funds. Those contingent matching funds, they're not there yet, but they plan on being there. If they're not there, then do we have a plan for that money to recycle back in and then be reallocated? Has that been taken into consideration?
Yeah, that's a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would assume that not having all of it funded or contributed would be one of the factors we'd measure in determining is it going to be a recommended project or not.
And certainly before a board vote, you would want to have it secured.
Veritably, we don't get to that situation where money has to go back and we reallocate. But we are doing some holdback anywhere, right? We're still tending to hold back 25%.
We're planning to hold back the 25% at this point unless the board tells us differently.
And to be clear, in every subrecipient agreement that we work on, there's always multiple clauses in there that say we have the right to claw that money back and reassign it to other projects if a project does not follow the expectations laid out in the original agreement.
Commissioner Wooden, I think you were next.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to echo your, the point that you made about not, never being able to, you're never going to get a chance like this again. And when it comes to framing transformation, because this was asked a number of times at the panel yesterday, I, you know, it's not just, to me, the impact of the project itself, but whether or not that project would ever happen if it weren't for this funding. Because there are some proposals that I'm seeing here and some that have been shared that getting these funds doesn't necessarily, the difference in getting these funds or not getting these funds is not the difference in that project happening or not, it probably just delays it. Simply because they may have better access to other philanthropic funds, their ability to raise as a, other philanthropic funds as a percentage of their total budget is likely higher, whereas there are some potential options that truly were, we won't have an opportunity to start that up or to create it without these dollars. And so I think that, to me, whether or not the funding or not funding is a go-no-go versus delay and start is a critical matter for me. And also, the, you know, to, to Chair Steck's point about the, the revenue loss category being more flexible, it also, those are by nature things that we could fund in the future with general fund dollars. You know, obviously, we don't know what our general fund's going to look like in any given year until we're there. But, you know, given our past experience and our ability to save revenue and use that towards strategic projects that do fit within our general fund constraints, I want us to take that into consideration as we're deciding what's transformational and what's not. Thank you.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Yeah, yeah, I'm greatly disappointed that we continue to say this is once in a lifetime because $120 million over four years really isn't a lot of money at this table. We approved a $100 million bond for the airport just to expand one concourse. Okay, folks, that was 100 million bucks. It's going to be paid for by parking. So where I see the transformation here happening is we have an opportunity to start putting out on this table, what are, what does, how well do our community want service from this entity? Because, for example, you know, I love, I love the group, give the taxpayers their money back. We want zero taxes. Well, then you want zero service. And unfortunately, a lot of times, the people of those groups are the first in line for government support. It's ironic, some would call it hypocrisy. You can label it. Transformation, of course, the Supreme Court, they've defined some things as we know it when we see it. Because for me, I've been talking to the community, and I'm just going to first say about the folks in Rockford, I am so envious of their community organizing ability to get all those people to stuff the ballot box. Because I've been telling other people to stuff the ballot box about community mental health. Because I would make the argument, Chair, that a mental health crisis center is not transformational. That mental health crisis center is a tragic outcome of our underfunding of mental health services for a generation. And we've built a world where people are so overstressed because we're chasing EA Sports and we're chasing new whatever, what did DeAndre talk about, the new Next Air Jordans? For me, transformational would be put 120 million dollars into grassroots mental health way upstream. But that's me, one vote. So let's talk about what do we want to fund as a county? Yes, this is one opportunity, but one mill is 30 million a year, isn't it? Whereas Matt, he can tell me what our assessed values are, our taxable values in the community. Can we not have the courage to say to folks, we hear you want these things, we hear you need these things, and we can ask each other to pay for them? Senior millage, veterans' millage, early childhood millage, the rapid millage, you know, other school millages. So folks, let's, let's really talk about how well we can invest these dollars, but this once in a lifetime, don't come back ever again. The stinginess of this county commission, again, I personally find slightly, you know, disheartening in my time here and knowing the history of this entity. But again, first people in line, first people in line want their taxes lower. So, ah, I could go on and on and on and on, but I got to get back to my day job. I got to fight a different bureaucracy this afternoon, so I'll leave it at that. So again, please, folks, let's have some courage as we have this great conversation.
All right. I think we're getting a sense of where you said on this. And by the way, I know when I see it as a reference to pornography, but I think you knew that.
I did. I have read that a few.
All right. Did you have a?
Yeah, just quickly, I didn't want it to get lost in the shuffle, but one of the roles of Guide House is to be cognizant of all the other pots of funding that are out there, federal level, state level. So it very well may be that some of the things come up might be more applicable somewhere else. We do have the transportation bill coming down the pike. I don't think that that has direct allocations to the county, but it may have different kinds of allocation such as broadband or other areas where we can, again, maximize other funds and just what's in ARPA, maybe to get some things done. So that is another role that Guide House has.
Alan, did you even need infrastructure?
I'm sorry, yeah, infrastructure, yeah. Thanks.
And Commissioner Green.
I didn't have one.
Oh.
Oh, I did have one.
Yeah, you did.
I lost it during.
Somewhere in the pornography.
I was lost in, in my own thoughts regarding Commissioner Bukowski's thoughts, which are many, but I'll, I'll spare them. I, I don't want to get into my own discussion on ideology as it relates to local government today.
I have a feeling this process will engage us in that ideology and that debate a number of times before we're done.
Certainly. I did have a clarification question on the, so 25%, we're, we're planning to hold back about 30 million? Is that, unless this board decides otherwise?
Unless you decide otherwise.
Okay, but that's going to be the recommendation from staff and from Guide House?
And the primary reason would be that there may be some other things that emerge.
Sure.
And there may be some things that work so well that you might say, wow, we should do more of that. But again, it would be a fairly tight leash because we have to have it all allocated. But again, it would be a fairly tight leash, because we have to have it all allocated by the end of, uh, twenty twenty-four, so it might be another allocation later this year or early to mid next year, and that'd be it.
Okay, thank you.
And then just a reminder, we did already allocate approximately eleven million dollars already through this commission, so...
Are we, uh, sorry. Quick follow-up on that. Are we including that in the one twenty-seven still, or is that the, are we reporting the current balance?
When I talk to groups, I say one sixteen.
Okay.
That's what I'm telling groups.
Okay.
We got one twenty-seven point six, we have allocated approximately eleven, we have so much left, we're going to hold back tentatively twenty-five percent of that.
Thank you.
There was a comment, yes, Commissioner LaGrane, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just want to follow up on a, a communication we had from Al, where you said that you would be recommending projects to us, so does that mean there are going to be a lot of projects we don't see?
I, I think what I hope I said, and if I didn't, I apologize, they're the first filter, so they will tell us whether something's eligible, so they're not really going to be recommending which projects the board should approve.
We will be seeing all eligible projects.
Yeah, and I'm going to add to that, uh, one of the goals is to organize all the information, right? So, we can, we can explain trends that we're seeing across these different silos of information. If we have a bunch of proposals, if you don't want to read all of them, they all are summarized this way, because there could be a lot of proposals to read, so we want to make sure that the summary is clear enough and concise enough that you can maybe even make choices just off reading these summaries of understanding what's actually in those proposals. But of course, the proposals will be available for you to page through as needed.
Yeah, I, I think that the Commissioner's point's well-taken, that many of us will know people who are engaged in submitting these proposals. We want to know, uh, and be able to talk intelligently about, okay, your proposal did come in, here's where it stands, so we know all of them.
Nothing else?
Sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Real quick, I, I just noticed the list that was provided, um, had forty proposals, and by the slide, there were seven completed. Were those thirty-seven, were those called off because they weren't eligible, or do I just not know how to count?
A little divide and conquer on this one today, so...
So, the list that you guys have in front of you are the fully finished proposals that have an organization tied to them, so there is a lot of proposals that either were just an individual or unfinished, which could still mean like they're in progress and haven't come back to them, so those are organizations, hundred percent, and completed proposals.
Thank you.
So, maybe again, to review, um, review the process, after Guide House has gone through that, identified, uh, maybe flagged for us where we have problems or non-qualified proposals, um, or how they measure up against the requirements for that, it's still going to go through another phase of an internal evaluation, um, and analysis, and then go through a process before it comes to us.
And with Commissioners too, so...
Yeah.
And then the other thing I've been thinking about, um, once we have the full information out and we have, uh, everyone understands, I think, or has some common, uh, understanding of, at least where we see the transformation, using something like the MSU Option Finder system, just to kind of quickly have the board rank things and see what we end up with. And you may say, wow, what a great process, you might say that isn't so great, but at least it will give you a sense of where the board is on a huge list of things, and where you see it, what items is the most transformational. So, it might, it might be a tool that is really good, but I, I think it's worth a try.
And it may, I, I guess we haven't decided how many work sessions we're going to need to work this out.
Right.
You know, that's, I know we see very few government functioning proposals, uh, but we're probably the advocates for that, so I think that's going to have to be something that we're going to really wrestle with internally. Ben, did you have a?
Yeah, I just, I had a follow-up on that, um, the question regarding the, um, groups, because some of these, you know, one of these is Kent County jail employee, volunteer of Kent County Animal Shelter, Kent County Health Department employee, but my husband owns a restaurant. And then a few of them, the organization is just Kent County, which might indicate that they misunderstood what the question was and suggested that it was something that we take on. So, I just wanted to confirm that, you know, I don't, I want to make sure we're weighing these properly, that those sound like they might be individuals and not a full group.
Yep, I'm sure that that's in the analysis, well, I, this is just a very summarily listing here and not substantive.
Yes, Commissioner Coleman?
So, the, just a question about process work sessions. So, I'm going to have to re-watch the, the YouTube segment, Commissioner Bogowski's comments, because I think there was a lot there worth consideration, but my brain got hung up on a hundred million not being a lot of money, um, so I'm going to have to reconsider all his subsequent comments, but will there be, uh, an opportunity for this commission to kind of discuss those kind of philosophical underpinnings of how we think about these things? And then also, will there be a, you know, maybe separate work session where we get a chance to interact with any of the, uh, the proposers that make it past a certain stage of the process?
I'm told the answer is yes and maybe, I don't figure out which one it goes to. I think, um, with respect to engaging directly with the proposers, uh, that's, if we do that, that's likely to be late in the process, because I don't think we want to have all one hundred of these proposers come in and do that, so, but it's, it's possible that we could have a stage near the end of this where you have some engagement on that. And what was the first part where, obviously, it was?
Uh, the first was, will there be some kind of opportunity to discuss?
Oh, yeah, the, the deep philosophical engagement. Well, I, I mean, my cut on that is that's, that's inevitable when we get down to the process of determining, uh, who are we going to support, what programs are we going to support? That seems to me inevitably that you're going to have the kinds of, of sense and analysis that Commissioner Bogowski shared, uh, you could share, others would share, um, by the time we get to, it's these five or these ten or whatever.
No, I, I think that is a good idea to have the board come together and talk about, try to come to some consensus on what transformational means, that could save a lot of time at some point. And I do think there may be a way to also do some surveying to maybe create some different interpretations that you would then discuss, so you have a starting point, uh, for discussion.
Well, I'm going to take the lead from the, um, Supreme Court on its discussion of pornography, and that is, uh, trying to debate pornography in the abstract is, is next to impossible, but when you actually have specific projects to deal with, uh, it makes a whole lot more sense to deal with, how, how's my sense, how's my measure, how's my values fit into that, but, so, obviously, Al and I have some working out to do here on that one.
And can I, two, I would love, I'd love to weigh in on both those. The first one, um, regarding, uh, talking to the individual groups, a lot of these, the process may end up being, we're going to allocate X amount of dollars for a type of project or this thing set within these parameters, but we need to go through a procurement process. And so, that procurement process would, would of course do those things, right? And so, you as a board might decide you want to spend X dollars on X type of thing, and then leave it to your procurement team to actually do that part of the process, right? These aren't official proposals, these are just organizations trying to give us greater parameters on the idea. And then the second thing I'd love to comment on is, in terms of coming to consensus, um, please focus on where you agree, because as you do see specific proposals, you might find this is easier than you think it is. Um, you know, if all of you agree that broadband should be funded, you might automatically have twenty pi, twenty percent of this entire budget dealt with, right? So, as you whittle down from agreement, you might find your disagreements are the last ten percent of this whole thing, which is a good place to be in. So, I recommend, start with agreement, work from there.
Because in fact, we may agree on broadband for totally different reasons.
Yes.
All right, any other questions or comments for this? Otherwise, I appreciate the update on it. Um, this is, this is a significant conversation for this board over the course of the year, and, um, we'll have to continue to work on it, so we look forward to the next focus in August, I guess it is, or maybe in July.
Yes.
All right, nothing else, we are adjourned. Oh, sorry, the public, sorry about that. Is there any public comment from the public that wishes to address the board with respect to anything? No. Now I can adjourn. No miscellaneous either? We are adjourned.